Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the City of Thousand Oaks City Council and Redevelopment Agency for Tuesday, March 9th, 2010. At this time, we'll call the meeting to order, and if you would all please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Bill De La Peña is absent at this time. Councilmember Irwin?
Here.
Councilmember Glancy?
Here.
Mayor Protem Fox?
Here.
Mayor Gillette?
Here.
Thank you. Item four, request for continuance of any public hearing or agenda item for the council's information. Closed session 14B regarding existing litigation, Siegel versus City of Thousand Oaks has been pulled from the agenda. Any other requests from the council? There being none? Thank you. Special presentations and announcements. We have a couple this evening, and I think it's probably easier if I move down to the podium. Okay, turn that on. Turn this one off. I had the honor Saturday of attending a birthday party in Thousand Oaks. And I get invited to a lot of birthday parties, but this one was really special because this one was a 100th birthday party, and the guest of honor is joining us this evening. Our first proclamation tonight is honoring this truly special occasion, and I'd like to introduce Louise Nakuta, who has just celebrated her 100th birthday. Let me also mention that Louise is the grandmother of Candace Hong, our city's Assistant City Manager. Louise, we wish you a very happy birthday. You're a beautiful lady and an example to us all. It's my pleasure to present you this evening with the proclamation that proclaims March 6 as Louise Nakuta Day. Let me read it to everyone, if I may. It's not going to embarrass you. Talks about some of your exploits, but probably not all of them. Pardon? No, no. And you can do pretty much whatever you want to down here. Let me tell you, you've earned it. Louise, who is affectionately called, is it Bab?
Bobby.
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 Bob? Bobby.
Bobby. Bobby. You sound like we're babbling back and forth. Okay, Bobby. Okay. Was born March 6, 1910. In the cosmopolitan city of Prague, Czechoslovakian, is celebrating her 100th birthday. And on January 30th, 1921, she and her parents, Alois and Marie Vorkovak, I hope I got that right, traveled to the United States to join Marie's parents and siblings on a homestead west of Hemingsford, Nebraska. They lived in Nebraska for 20 years, where she met and married Emil A. Nakuta in 1927. They were married for 54 years. Together, they raised two daughters, Mildred and Arfen, and in March 1941, the Nakuta family moved to Santa Monica, California. During World War II, Louise worked for Higgins Industries and Douglas as an inspector of small parts and raw stock. Louise participated in Sokol, a Czech youth sports organization, serving in many positions, including the first woman president of the U.S. Pacific District. And Louise has seen many changes during her lifetime, made many wonderful contributions, and has continued to bring joy and delight to the lives of her family, friends, and all who know her. She has been blessed with six grandchildren and six great-grandchildren and two great-great-grandchildren. And during her lifelong and productive lifetime, Louise has earned the respect and admiration of people from all walks of life and all ages because of her knowledge, experience, wisdom, and spirit. Now therefore, I, Dennis C. Gillette, Mayor of the City of Thousand Oaks, on behalf of the entire city council, to hereby proclaim March 6, 2010, Louise Bave Nakuta Day, and offer benefits, heartfelt best wishes on the occasion of her 100th birthday.
Thank you for your kindness in thinking of my birthday. Thank you very much. This is a great evening for me, really. Thank you.
Thank you and congratulations. Let's get the council members over here. This is such a unique occasion.
Where do I go?
Well, let's hear it right here where it's close to your chair, but just turn right out there, and the council will come over here. Okay, Andy, want to turn around? Jackie? Candy, why don't you come over here, too? Okay. We'll get you over here with Grandma. Get you in here. Okay. Okay, now wait a second. All together.
Happy Birthday to you. Happy Birthday to you. Happy Birthday, dear Louise. Happy Birthday to you.
There we go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Why don't we give you a minute?
Thank you so much.
I know you'd like to stay, because this is fascinating stuff, especially when we get in the business portion of the meeting, but...
Thank you so much for your kindness.
Thank you for everything you've done, and have a wonderful, happy birthday.
Something I'll never forget.
Wonderful. That's wonderful. Our second presentation tonight brings us some important information on an event that's been in our city's spotlight for a few months, the Amgen Tour of California. This is the largest cycling competition in the United States, and it will be starting and finishing the eighth and final section of their 650-mile ride in our community. An estimated 100,000 to 200,000 people will be visiting our city. What a wonderful opportunity for our businesses. Tell us more about this spectacular race. I'd like to introduce Jerry Kane, Chair of the Local Organizing Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. City Councilmembers, thank you for having me. First off, I didn't know I was attending a birthday party tonight, so that's great. Secondly, Westlake Football, love you guys. Thanks for having me. My name's Jerry Jane. I am the chairperson for the Conejo Valley Local Organizing Committee. As Chair of the Local Organizing Committee, I'm proud to be working with the cities of Thousand Oaks, Westlake Village in Agoura Hills, as well as the Greater Conejo Valley Chamber of Commerce to host the greatest professional cycling event in America. This event will be held on Sunday, May 23rd, 2010, is the Amgen Tour California. Each year, communities from across California vie to host a stage of this prestigious race. I'm thrilled that our region has been selected to host the grand finale of the 2010 race. This year's event will be an economic and cultural boom for our region. As race day approaches, we want to make sure that the residents are all in the know about the local happenings. We've established a local Amgen Tour website where we post regular updates, and it's called That said, let me share with you, if you don't mind, a couple of important dates that are upcoming that are associated with this event. First off, we have a wine release party with our friends at Malibu Family Wines, which is a major partner of this event for the three communities. That event is going to be on Saturday, March 27th. It's a taste and purchase for the special King of the Mountains Cuvee. It's a special blend that our friends at Malibu Family Wines are making just for this event. Bottle is here. They just produced the bottle, and they just bottled their first thousand cases, and the more wine they sell, the more money the LOC makes. That event, again, will be on Saturday, March 27th, from 3:00 to 6:00, up at their facility on Mulholland. Secondly, there's a breakaway ride that benefits the Breakaway from Cancer Initiative, associated with Amgen. That event will be on Sunday, April 11th. It will be starting and finishing at Cal Lutheran University. That's an opportunity for everyone to get on their bikes, raise money for cancer research, and ride the route that the pros will be riding on Sunday, May 23rd. Additionally, on Saturday, May 22nd, the day before our event, there'll be a large wine and food festival, again, at Malibu Family Wines. It's going to be called the Taste of the Tour. That event will go on all day, where there'll be gourmet food, as well as a wine festival, with a live broadcast of Stage 7, which is the time trial, which will be held that day from Los Angeles. It'll start and finish at LA Live, where the Staples Center is. Again, this event will be at Malibu Family Wines, up at the Saddle Rock Ranch. The next day is our main event, which is Sunday, May 23rd. That's race day. The event will be starting at the Oaks Regional Shopping Center. There'll be activities going on all morning, and I believe the Oaks Mall will be opening early on that day. The race will start at 12:30. There'll be a lot of activities going on at the start. The finish line is going to be on Townsgate Road, so that event will finish there. There'll be a lifestyle festival taking place as well. There'll be a lot of spectators at the finish line, and there'll be a lifestyle festival on Village Glen. Again, for details on this, as well as any sponsorship, I invite you to visit amgentourcanejo.org. Finally, I'd like to share a short video that we produced to highlight the Stage 8 route. It is currently being used by the race owner, AEG, as a promotional piece to showcase our region to the international audience. After seeing this, I think you'll agree that Sunday, May 23rd, is going to be truly a special day for our community. If we can roll the video?
Welcome to the Conejo Valley, your host for Stage 8 and the grand finale of the 2010 Amgen Tour of California. On Sunday, May 23rd, the world's most elite cyclist will conclude their eight-day run through California in our beautiful valley with an epic challenge. Our stage will start and finish in the City of Thousand Oaks, which is also the corporate center to the event's title sponsor, Amgen. This is a circuit course that will test the world's most elite cyclists, and after having already completed seven hard days in the saddle, this stage is going to hurt. With 80-plus miles and 7,000 feet of climbing, cycling fans from around the world will be witness to what will turn out to be the greatest stage in U.S. cycling history ever. But that's just our opinion. Let's take a look at the course. This final day of racing kicks off at the Oaks Regional Shopping Center, providing a great opportunity for fans to connect with riders and teams as the cyclists prepare to embark on an intensely challenging day. From the Oaks, the race will parade east down Thousand Oaks Boulevard towards the circuit, passing the Thousand Oaks Civic Arts Plaza and the Lace, both excellent spots to catch the competitors in action. After receiving the green flag on Townsgate Road, both the circuit and actual race begins. From there, the route rolls into the city of Westlake Village on the flats of Agoura Road. Continuing east, the riders will proceed to the city of Agoura Hills, where the competitors will dramatically launch from the sprint zone located near the Renaissance Hotel. As the pace quickens, the riders will mentally prepare for the intense climbs that lie ahead, bidding farewell to the Conejo Valley as they hit the rollers on Cornell Road, followed by a tight turn and nine miles on Mulholland Highway. This is where the fuses will really start to purr, as the riders converge on Rock Store Climb, consisting of a 7% 2.6 mile grade with 900 feet of total gain. There is little rest from there, as the climbing continues with an ascent to the King of the Mountain, located at picturesque Malibu Family Wines. Following the winery, the riders stay on Mulholland and roll along the top of the Santa Monica Mountains for several miles. The riders will then turn onto Westlake Boulevard and head north, beginning an extremely technical descent back into the Conejo Valley. The final K into the finish is flat and fast, giving the riders an opportunity to take a deep breath, because they're doing it over and over and over again. That's right, the race circuit totals an incredible four laps, each covering 20.6 miles with just under 1,800 feet of elevation gain. So there you have it, the final stage of the 2010 Amgen Tour of California in the beautiful Conejo Valley. It will make thrilling theater for spectators and a true test of will for the athletes, a showcase unlike anything this region has ever seen. For the final weekend, we have a multitude of community events planned, from sipping wine at the Malibu Wine Festival to shopping at the Oaks. There is something for everyone. On race day, you can lounge in on-course hospitality or stake out your own spot on the mountains to cheer on your favorite riders. On Sunday, April 11th, you can get a jump on the pros by participating in the Breakaway Ride, presented by Specialized, a rare opportunity for everyday cyclists to ride some or all of the Stage 8 route and personally experience what the pros will be up against. We're eagerly awaiting your visits to the scenic Conejo Valley, one of the best places to recreate and ride in the United States, but we might be a little biased. What do pro cyclists think?
Amgen Tour California is obviously a very difficult race, the hardest race in the U.S., one of the hardest races in the world, and to do the last stage going four times up Rock Store Climb is going to be an epic battle. It should be a great show for the fans.
Make your plans now for May 23rd, 2010. For all the latest on the Conejo Valley stage of the Amgen Tour of California, visit www.amgentourcanejo.org. For details on the entire race, go to www.amgentourofcalifornia.com.
Jerry? Thank you very much, and I've been told that besides the events website, this will be running regularly, available on the city's website, and also on TO-TV on Channel 10 for anybody that wants to watch it. And you guys will have to skip the wine tasting. Sorry about that. Wonderful, wonderful event. Should be an exciting thing. Exciting event. Okay. Our final presentation this evening. We're proud once again to welcome some of our Westlake champions. The Westlake High School Warrior Football Team is now the 2009 CIF Southern Section Division Champion. Congratulations, guys. You did a great job. Coach, you want to come up?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On behalf of our principal, Mr. Ron Lepary, I want to thank you for having us here this evening, and what a ride it was. We enjoyed every step of the way. Looking back over the season, looking at some of the newspaper writers, looking at our team, they really didn't give us too much opportunity or too much hope for us to not only win the CIF title, but even win the league title. We were picked by most of them to finish anywhere from third, second, to fourth in our league, and these guys, they just proved that with a lot of hard work and playing as a team and really playing hard every week, that we can achieve things that are way beyond the scope of what people thought we could achieve, and really a testament to a lot of great coaches within the program, and some of them are here this evening, and they'll introduce themselves, but also the hard work and a lot of hours by these young men. These men, young men, represent the CIF Player of the Year in Nick Isom. He is also the Ventura County and Marmoni League Player of the Year, the Wide Receiver of the Year in Nelson Spruce, and the Linebacker of the Year in the Marmoni League in Adrian Mugirza. We set the bar pretty high, and we have an exciting year. We had a great year, and next year, I think, will be just as exciting. So with that, I'm going to have each one of them come up and introduce themselves, and thank you very much for having us.
Oh, sorry. No, that's fine, that's fine. Thank you, Coach. It's, let me present you with a commendation, you on behalf of your team, a phenomenal accomplishment that they've pulled off. This commendation is in honor of the 2009 Westlake High School Warrior Football Team, the CIF Southern Section Northern Division, Marmoni League. "Westlake High School Warrior Football Team defeated the Moor Park Musketeers 14-10 on December 11th, 2009, in the championship game of the CIF Southern Section Northern Division, and the team and coaching staff can be proud of their undefeated season of 14 wins and zero losses. The Westlake High School Warrior Football Team showed true sportsmanship, determination, discipline, and teamwork. The Westlake High School Warrior Football Team served our community with distinction." Now therefore, I, Dennis C. Gillette, Mayor of the City of Thousand Oaks, on behalf of the entire city council, to hereby commend 2009 Westlake High School Warrior Football Team, and congratulate the team and coaches for their outstanding season and victories in the CIF Southern Section Northern Division. Congratulations, Coach. Okay, and she wanted to give them the pins. Okay, and then you're going to put them over there, and we'll get a picture.
Max Kleindean, wide receiver.
Daniel Peralta, wide receiver.
Colin Fenn, running back.
Mason Tebow, defensive end.
David Grubal, open offensive line.
Jeff Carr, running back.
Ross Kinnickow, linebacker.
Trevor McGrath, defensive end.
Adrian Mugirza, linebacker.
Brandon Rootbergs, offensive line.
Keith Ramjak, offensive line.
John Flores, offensive line.
Justin Solis, defensive tackle.
Zach Miller, offensive line.
Cody Tuttle, receiver.
Alex Ball, kicker.
Adam Azar, linebacker.
Max Winsberg, linebacker.
Casey Bliss, cornerback.
Colton Hoffman, linebacker.
Shane Geraldo, linebacker.
Trey Wilson, receiver.
Deshaun Hunt, running back, corner.
Trevor Wood, receiver.
Brandon Bigno, receiver.
Dylan Ray, linebacker.
Brad Cottner, offensive line.
Devon Ray, linebacker.
Brennan Ray, D-line.
Tony McCary, defensive end, tight end.
Rowan Zapata, O-line.
Logan Chase, defensive line.
Kenny Cruz, offensive line.
Nick Zavala, wide receiver.
Dallas Clayton, running back.
Nick Isom, quarterback.
Jesus Lopez, offensive line.
Christopher Ann, offensive line.
Tavier Mori, running back.
Coach Eric Schalkeford, offensive coordinator and receivers coach.
Ron Resigno, tight end coach.
Ken Papata, linebacker coach.
Coach Steve Hagie, run game coordinator.
Ellis Green, running back coach.
Cameron Salem, past defensive coordinator, DB coach. And I wanted to add one thing. Having played for Coach Bankard, I know his humility and his humbleness, and I know he wouldn't stand up here to brag for himself, so I thought I might brag in his place. For those of you that don't know, Coach Bankard is the only Ventura County head football coach that was awarded CIF California State Coach of the Year.
Okay, Mayor? Followed by Peter Lyons and Israel Contreras.
Thank you, Mayor Gillette and council member. It is Jim Hoagland. I'm here with the Ventura County Grand Jury. Dick Hus and I are here as part of our civil oversight activities. Also, I'm here to recruit new members to the grand jury. We are having our recruiting season in the next six weeks, where volunteers, people who have a year to spare, can come participate in the civil oversight of Ventura County, the 10 Ventura cities, and the many special districts within the county. Our open house is on Friday, April 16th. I'll leave a brochure with the clerk, but please, if you're interested in the grand jury, bring up the County Ventura on your computer, log on to the grand jury, and see all the details, including an application for grand jury service. Mr. Gillette.
Thank you very much, sir. Peter Lyons, followed by Israel Contreras, followed by Kathy Carlson.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Peter Lyons, and I'm representing the Central Coast Section of the American Planning Association. And I'm here to invite the community, invite yourselves, to become involved and participate in this spring's upcoming Citizen Planning Academy. You'll see there, the clerk is handing out our flyer, and then on the backside is an application that they can be filled out and turned in to us, or actually just go to our website. The Planning Academy will be held over eight weeks, beginning this April 15th and going through June 3rd, at the Oxtard Campus of the Cal Lutheran University. As a professional planner, and through my day job, I'm the Community Development Director over in Simi Valley, I've really, I look at this as a great opportunity for those who are interested to truly understand what we do and what the council does and what happens in Ventura County as to land use planning. It's a great bargain. The purpose of this academy is to educate the citizens of the complexities of community planning and local government organization, and provide a forum to learn about the relevant issues facing Ventura County and its 10 cities. The courses will be held 6:30 to 9:30 in the evening, and offered at a cost of only $50, and that includes dinner. Professional planners, local officials, experts from the field will teach the course, and we'll even have a mock development review committee, so that students can get an idea with what the development process is all about. Written materials will be provided, and certificates will be given to those who do finish. Applications, this is important, applications will be accepted through the end of March. It is a limited group. And again, there's the website, which I'll repeat, is www centralcoastapa.org. Again, centralcoastapa.org. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lyons. And I was just wondering, did that information, will that information be available on the City of Thousand Oaks website? Can we do that?
If you don't mind, I can email it to John tomorrow, and he can have it available.
If you would, we'd much appreciate it. That sounds like something that our residents might, there might be some folks out there that are really interested in that. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Israel Contreras, followed by Kathy Carlson, followed by Suzanne Duckett. Good evening, sir.
Hello. My name is Israel Contreras. I'm sitting in the Thousand Oaks. And I have problems that I need a translator. This time, I don't have a translator. Can I make another?
I'm Kathy Carlson. I'm here to help Mr. Gutierrez. We, I'm sorry, Contreras, we didn't have a, can we get a Spanish translator for April 13th? He would like to speak about the problems at the city center. He is a witness to the segregation at the city center. He was also shadowed, and it was a hostile experience. He's a volunteer there. He was told not to complain, those kinds of things. So he would like a proper translator. I do speak some Spanish, but he'd like it to be correct. So if you could accommodate him and the next, and also, we had another speaker. Don't you have a card for Raquel?
I'm not sure. I haven't looked all the way through the card yet.
Okay. Anyway, so could we make that request on his behalf?
Okay. City manager, how do you, how do you want to do that? You want to request, you've received a request for April 13th?
Yes, because your next meeting is at the golf course.
Ms. Carlson, the answer is that yes, the city will accommodate that. And we will have, on April the 13th, we will have an interpreter here.
Okay, and we intend to have his statement written out, so that you can also get a copy.
That would be helpful.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, sir. Ms. Carlson, you're up next.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm also here to speak about some of the problems at the city center preschool. You have a contract with the state of California and another contract with CVUSD. Your contract with the state is for one year, which is up to June 30th. So I encourage you to put it on the agenda, to review the financials. I see that Brenda Hunter responded for hours to some of the problems that were brought up. I did want to bring to your attention, she said, oh, the city, the state licensing didn't find any problems at Park Oaks. Well, state licensing called me and to give a report, and they said, we didn't find anything at Park Oaks, the segregation, the water down milk. I said, you went to the wrong school. So it's, they went, they had a transition of three different inspectors for this case. It's still open. So, so the information you got from Brenda Hunter saying that, oh, don't, you know, don't worry, there aren't any violations, they went to the wrong place. So I also have concerns that the report she gave to you, saying that the, what a high-quality staff she thinks she has, if you look at the attachment she gave you, several of the documents are expired, the teaching permits. That's not legal. You cannot have preschool teachers with expired permits. And plenty of them had missing documents as well. That's a concern of mine. I went to two preschools today, Honey Tree, the two Lutheran preschools near university school. The directors themselves looked at it and said, this is a big problem, that the city preschool and NFL has people working there who have expired documents. And as you know, several of them were not fingerprinted at the beginning, and that's your preschool. That's about it. Raquel is very nervous. She is also a witness. When she was let go from Neighborhood for Learning, the assistant manager, the person that Brenda wants to replace her, put out her arm and said, no, you're not white, I'm white. Raquel was very upset about that. So she's not sure if she's going to speak tonight. And also, Mrs. Palma was, had a phone call today from your staff, somebody here that called and said, you don't need to come tonight, we're already investigating this. And what is your role? Now, this is the whole point, that these people who are whistleblowers have been told to shut up. They've been brought behind doors, doors shut, and she got a call tonight, saying, why are you doing, you know, you don't need to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carlson. Suzanne Duckett and Raquel Piñata is, does have a speaker card in, and will be called right after Mrs. Duckett, if she so wishes to speak. Good evening, Miss Duckett.
Oh, good evening. Suzanne Duckett, Thousand Oaks. I want to thank the Westlake Football Team for looking like a real team tonight, and being proud of their colors. They were a real treat to see. So, thank you, Westlake Football Team. I came for two reasons tonight. The first one, I want to personally thank Dennis Gillette, and for him bringing Charmaine Jackson, who is a city, who is a new city assistant city attorney, to our Central Thousand Oaks Homeowners Association. I personally want to thank you for contributing, being informative, and interesting, and helpful. So thank you both very much. The second reason I've come tonight is for the article in the Acorn, the Thousand Oaks Acorn, dated March 4th. And on the front page, there's an article about the city losing a lot of money. And down at the end, down at the bottom of the front page, is another article that we have just spent $25,000 on a new city logo. I want everybody to, when they go to find this Acorn, I want you to turn to page 11, and look at this city logo. I was called last night and called this morning from a gentleman who has worked 40 years in this industry, and he says that this new logo is a disgrace. And I am here tonight to defend myself about shopping locally. If you think that this is a good example of shopping locally, I want to apologize. And I think that what we need to do is step back for two, for a minimum of two years, and maybe five years, when the budget has been thoroughly looked at, and we have a vision about what's going ahead and how much branding we need to do. I want people, whenever they show a close-up of you people, I want them to look at the rug and think of how many articles are going to have to be changed by the city. $25,000 is just opening the door. You're talking about millions of dollars spent on this logo change. It's going on every car in the city, every police car, all of the equipment, the outfits that people wear in the city. This one is just fine for a while. So everybody pay attention to the old city logo. Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Duckett. Rachel Bimena, and if, Rachel? Welcome.
It's Raquel. Raquel Bimena.
Raquel, are you comfortable?
Yes.
Okay, fine.
Thank you. Hi, good evening. I'm here, I'm a preschool teacher, and I worked in Mexico for 10 years. I tell English as my second language. Just, I want to know, and I want to say, I work in Park Oaks, and I received discrimination for Janet Fleming, after one meeting with Brenda Hunter. Janet told me I'm white, and she placed her arm next to my arm and says, look at your skin, and look at my skin. I don't know what it means, but like a teacher, we work with multiple core children, and that's not mean like a, you are white and I'm white. And I, maybe, I don't want to make mistake when I say something, and I prefer somebody translate what I want to tell. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms.
So you understood that Janet Fleming, when she was, she was called in...
Our next speaker, Israel Contreras, followed by Kathy Carlson, followed by Suzanne Duckett. Good evening, sir.
Hello. My name is Israel Contreras. And I'm sitting here in the Thousand Oaks. And I have problems that I need a translator this time, but I don't have a translator. Can I make another?
I'm Kathy Carlson. I'm here to help Mr. Gutierrez. Um, we, I'm sorry, Contreras, we didn't have a, can we get a Spanish translator for April thirteenth? He would like to speak about the problems at the city center. He is a witness to the segregation at the, at the city center. He was also shadowed and it was a hostile experience. He's a volunteer there. He was told not to complain, those kinds of things. So he would like a, a proper translator. I do speak some Spanish, but he'd like it to be correct. So if you could accommodate him and the next, and also we had another speaker. Don't you have a card for Raquel?
I'm not sure. I haven't looked all the way through the card yet.
Okay. Anyway, so could we make that request on his behalf?
Okay. Uh, city manager, how do you, how do you want to do that? You want to request, you've received a request for April thirteenth?
Yes, because your next board, your next meeting is at the golf course.
Ms. Carlson, the answer is that yes, the city will accommodate that. And we will have, on the April the thirteenth, we will have a, an interpreter here.
Okay. And we intend to have his statement written out so that you can also get a copy.
That would be helpful.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Uh, Ms. Carlson, you're up next.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm also here to speak about some of the problems at the city center preschool. You have a contract with the state of California and another contract with CVUSD. Your contract with the state is for one year, which is up to June thirtieth. So I encourage you to put it on the agenda, to review the financials. I see that Brenda Hunter responded for hours to some of the problems that were brought up. I did want to bring to your attention, she said, oh, the city, the state licensing didn't find any problems at Park Oaks. Well, state licensing called me and to give a report and they said, we didn't find anything at Park Oaks, the segregation, the water down milk. I said, you went to the wrong school. So it's, they went, they had a transition of three different inspectors for this case. It's still open. So, so the information you got from Brenda Hunter saying that, oh, don't, you know, don't, don't worry, there aren't any violations, they went to the wrong place. So I also have concerns that the report she gave to you saying that the, what a high-quality staff she thinks she has, if you look at the attachment she gave you, several of the documents are expired, the teaching permits. It's, that's not legal. You cannot have preschool teachers with expired permits. And plenty of them had missing documents as well. That's a concern of mine. I went to two preschools today, Honey Tree, the two Lutheran preschools near University School. They, the directors themselves looked at it and said, this is a, a big problem, that the city preschool and NFL has, has people working there who have expired documents. And as you know, several of them were not fingerprinted at the beginning and that, that's your preschool. Uh, that's about it. Uh, Raquel is very nervous. She, um, is also a witness. When she was let go from Neighborhood for Learning, the assistant manager, the person that Brenda wants to replace her, put out her arm and said, no, you're not white, I'm white. Raquel was very upset about that. So she's not sure if she's going to speak tonight. And also, Mrs. Palma was, had a phone call today from your staff, somebody here that called and said, you don't need to come tonight, we're already investigating this. And what is your role? Now, this is the whole point, that these people who are whistleblowers have been told to shut up. They've been brought behind doors, doors shut, and she got a call tonight saying, why are you doing, you know, you don't need to come? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carlson. Suzanne Duckett and Raquel Piñata is, does have a speaker card in and will be called right after Mrs. Duckett if she, if she so wishes to speak. Good evening, Ms. Duckett.
Oh, good evening. Suzanne Duckett, Thousand Oaks. I want to thank the Westlake football team for looking like a real team tonight and being proud of their colors. They were a real treat to see. So thank you, Westlake football team. I came for two reasons tonight. The first one, I want to personally thank Dennis Gillette and for him bringing Charmaine Jackson, who is a city, who is a new city assistant city attorney. To our Central Thousand Oaks Homeowners Association. I personally want to thank you for contributing, being informative and, um, interesting and helpful. So thank you both very much. The second reason I've come tonight is for the article in the Acorn, the Thousand Oaks Acorn dated March fourth. And on the front page, there's an article about the city losing a lot of money. And down at the end, down at the bottom is, of the front page, is another article that we have just spent $25,000 on a new city logo. I want everybody to, when they go to find this Acorn, I want you to turn to page 11 and look at this city logo. I was called last night and called this morning from a gentleman who has worked 40 years in this industry. And he says that this new logo is a disgrace. And I am here tonight to defend myself about shopping locally. If you think that this is a good example of shopping locally, I want to apologize. And, um, I think that what we need to do is step back for two, for a minimum of two years and maybe five years, when the budget has been thoroughly looked at and we have a vision of, about what's going ahead and how much branding we need to do. I want people, whenever they show a close-up of you people, I want them to look at the rug and think of how many articles are going to have to be changed by the city. $25,000 is just opening the door. You're talking about millions of dollars spent on this logo change. It's going on every car in the city, every police car, all of the equipment, the outfits that people wear in the city. This one is just fine for a while. So everybody pay attention to the old city logo. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Duckett. Rachel Bimena, and if, Rachel? Welcome.
It's Raquel. Raquel Pimena.
Raquel, are you comfortable?
Yes.
Okay, fine.
Thank you. Hi, good evening. I'm here, I'm a preschool teacher and I worked in Mexico for 10 years. I tell English as my second language. Just, I want to know and I want to say, I work in Park Oaks and I received discrimination for Janet Fleming after one meeting with Brenda Hunter. Janet told me I'm white and she placed her arm next to my arm and says, look at your skin and look my skin. I don't know what it means, but like a teacher, we work with multiple core children and that's not mean like a, you are white and I'm white. And I, maybe, I don't want to make mistake when I say something and I prefer somebody translate what I want to tell. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms.
So you understood that Janet Fleming, when she was, she was called in and she was fired, she's a former Roots and Wings teacher. And then she was at Park Oaks. And then she made a lot of complaints and she was a whistleblower. Then they called her in and during her termination interview, this woman, she said, I understand these, Raquel said, I understand how these children feel because they're Mexican, but I'm, I'm white. Because she's not an Indian Mexican, she's a Caucasian Mexican. And then Janet Fleming put her arm out next to hers and said, you're not white, I'm white. And this is the woman that is being tapped to be the replacement because Brenda Hunter is leaving. So that was the point. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Car, uh, Mrs. Carlson for assisting in that clarification. We move to item seven. The, uh, excuse me, let me ask you, the city manager, did you have any comment on any of the comment sections?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We heard a couple speakers on the childcare center. We did provide a, an update memo to the city council. Would like to remind the council that we do take the allegations that have been made tonight and before, and the recent city council meeting very seriously in terms of our roles as the administrator of the state grant that is provided to the childcare center as well as the owner of the facility. Senior staff is investigating allegations and working with the Canal Valley Unified School District. And we are dealing with some sensitive personnel issues, which are not open at this time for discussion, but we'll continue the investigation and report back to city council with respect to the findings. There was a comment made about the city icon and would like to remind the council that there's no change to the city seal such as the one in front of us here. The city actually doesn't have an official logo, so there's no effort there. What is at work, and we have been communicating with council along the way, is the city is working with a Thousand Oaks-based design firm to help us with an internal project to formalize the, and develop a consistent look on city print materials. We did this about a decade or so ago and this is just another refreshment of, of that effort. And these are real minor things, dealing with our letterhead, the website, and citywide newsletter, that type of thing. So the, the city law, the city, um, seal stays in place and we'll continue to keep the council updated on that. That's it by way of follow-up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mitnick. We move to item seven. City and redevelopment agency consent calendar. Uh, Mrs. Bill de la Pena?
Thank you. I would like to pull item seven W.
Long consent calendar. Okay. Consent calendar with the exception of seven W. Anyone else? Okay. Um, let's move, let's get the entire, what's the pleasure of the council on the, on the rest of the consent calendar without, with the exception of W? Dr. Glancy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move the balance of the consent calendar.
Have a motion, comments to the motion? Please vote. Okay. Hold off just a minute, please. Uh, I have one, one speaker card is for questions only. Uh, questions only, the League of, uh, League of Women Voters. There was, I don't think there's a need for it. There weren't any questions on it? All right, fine. Uh, Stephanie Angelini, Westlake Village, Chair of the Arts Commission. Do you have, did you want to speak on one, on the consent calendar on one of the items? Please, please come up at this time. Thank you, I'm sorry. I didn't.
Sorry, I didn't know if I was speaking before or after. Thank you, Mayor Gillette and members of the city council. I'm Stephanie Angelini. I chair the arts commission. On your consent calendar tonight is a donation from resident Mary Cook. Going to be Vanna White and show it here. This is a photograph of sheep herder Nick Acosta, taken in 1963 in Newberry Park by artist Jack Barsky. Mr. Barsky gave the picture to Mrs. Cook, who donated it to the city. The arts commission accepted this piece because we believe that it is an important part of our cultural history. So I thank you for including it in your consent counts, uh, calendar. I just want to speak for just one second about the arts commission. The city has a lot of arts treasures, visual arts that are displayed all over the city and city hall and libraries and municipal centers. We also have artists as our arts treasures and we also have beautiful facilities such as the one we're in. The arts commission is excited about the upcoming cultural arts review adoption. We're hoping that it will create transparency in the vast and complicated arts landscape that is Thousand Oaks. The arts commission is your boots on the ground. We're your hands in the paint and we are your voices on the stage. Each and every one of us has, if not now, at one time, been a professional artist. And we've represented dancers, visual artists, musicians, writers, and yes, even actors. So our job is to advise you on the measures and methods to render assistance regarding artistic, aesthetic, and cultural aspects of community life. For the last two years, the arts commission's in a difficult position because we're on hold for the arts cultural review. We've lost one commissioner who's passed away and a couple who have moved away. So our important projects like the Teen Video Festival, the Healing Power of Music, the Open Studio Tour where you can see artists in their natural habitat, and the Cavley Visual Arts are in the hands of a very small but very dedicated group. Like I said, we're your boots or your ballet slippers on the ground and we're involved in virtually every arts group in the city. So we hope you'll engage us in conversation before you make your final decisions regarding the cultural arts review. We hope that you'll remember that artists are strong community organizers. We have much more than documenting social change. With brush and movement, we promote and change our social landscape as well as any community organizer. Arts power is in its ability to engage communities and cross boundaries and it can transform and inspire our future. So we hope that you will listen. We thank you for including this piece of art in this, um, calendar. And thank you all for this chance. So, thank you.
Stephanie, it's my, it's my privilege on behalf of the council to thank you and, and your folks for the fantastic job you do and the service you provide the residents of this city. There's a particular attraction for me to that piece of work because I knew Nick. I, I knew him quite well. Nick, the folks that have seen the pictures of the sheep crossing Thousand Oaks Boulevard and Moore Park Road, uh, Nick was the, the man that was responsible for bringing the Basque shepherds here to the valley and when, there were times of the year when these hills were covered with his charges. And he was a, he was a superior individual and I think that's a beautiful likeness of him. But from all of us to you, thank you so much for what you do and continue to do to serve our residents.
Well, you're very welcome. We're very humbled. We like our jobs, so thank you. But we're hoping you'll fire us soon. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Dave, Dave Moran, uh, questions only on the League of Women Voters. And there were no questions on that item on, on consent, so we'll move on. There being nothing further, we have a motion.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much. Now we'll go back to item W, ordinance amending municipal code sections. Uh, Ms. Bill de la Pena, you had questions on that item?
Actually, no, I don't. Just clarification also for housekeeping purposes that I was, that I voted against amending the ordinance. And it was a four one vote and I need to continue that. I also wanted to clarify based on something that was published in the Ventura County Star that it makes it easier and less costly for property owners to prune and remove hazardous oak trees from their land. Our previous ordinance already did that. This new ordinance allows for healthy trees to be removed as well. And that is why, um, one of the reasons why I had voted against it. So, somebody else would have to make the motion for item W.
Okay, fine. Uh, is there a need for any additional clarification or pleasure of the council on item seven W? Dr. Glancy?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I move seven W.
Have a motion, comments to the motion? There being none, please vote.
If Mr. Glancy and Mrs. Bill de la Pena can vote, please. That motion carries four one with council member Bill de la Pena dissenting, and I just want to read the titles of both ordinances.
Thank you.
Ordinance amending sections of the Thousand Oaks Municipal Code revising definition and adjusting campaign contribution limits to reflect changes in the California Consumer Price Index and the city's contribution limits and disclosure requirements. And the second ordinance is amending the municipal code sections five dash fourteen point oh one through five dash fourteen point oh eight of chapter four of title five and section nine dash four point nine oh four G two of chapter four of title nine to revise and establish definitions, procedures, and protection standards for preservation and protection of oak trees throughout the city.
Thank you very much. Okay. Uh, we'll now move to, uh, well, excuse me, item eight, public hearings. We have none this evening. We go to, uh, the real exciting part, department reports, especially when we get into pavement management programs. We're all looking forward to that. Item nine A, Mr. Watkins, Public Works Director.
Thank you, Mayor Gillette, members of the council. I appreciate your clearing the calendar and giving us the amount of time that's needed for this very important subject. This will be the, the city's State of the Pavement address. Joining me here on the dais, Mr. Tom Pisa. Mr. Pisa's been to council a number of times before, but not recently. You know Mr. Spurgeon, the deputy director, and then Dan Lazo, senior engineer for this project. Similarly to the way we've done a water master plan, a wastewater master plan, a storm drain master plan, we revisit the State of the Pavements every five years to make sure that we know both accurately the inventory and the condition of the streets and also to present city council with a proposed five-year capital program. And that's what we'll be doing here tonight. Just very, very quickly, the city, this is a tremendous asset for the city, 375 miles of streets, over eight million square yards of pavement with a replacement value of around $700 million. And given those very big numbers, it does make sense that the city manages these very carefully. Uh, Mr. Pisa's going to go through the technical results of the study and what the condition is, and then Mr. Spurgeon is going to go through and talk about funding and revenues and then we will wrap it up and answer any questions you might have, so.
Thank you, Mark. Mayor Gillette and city council members, to assist in managing this enormous investment that we have in streets, we have instituted a pavement management program. The city in 1991 implemented it. The process of the pavement management program is to survey the streets and help for condition and provide us with tools to help manage our projects and funding. The pavement, excuse me, the pavement management program is updated every five years and we utilize consultant services to accomplish the work. Infrastructure Management System, IMS, of Chandler, Arizona, was selected based on a competitive request for proposal process. IMS uses automated equipment such as the Surface Row Tester that is pictured here to survey and evaluate the condition of the streets. It contains lasers, cameras, measuring equipment, and GPS to measure roughness, cracking, and rutting of the streets and also that collects other environmental information such as the curb and gutters. All this information is stored in a computer database. IMS also took photographs of the streets and also collected information regarding our signs for our sign inventory utilized by our maintenance and operation group. For arterial streets, IMS used a deflection testing machine called the DynaFlect to better gain knowledge about the entire structure of the pavement, especially the subsurface conditions. Because arterials carry heavier loads and more traffic, knowing the condition of the pavement foundation gives us a better value, evaluation of the condition of the pavement. Testing gives us a lot of information, characterizes the conditions of the pavement and rates of pavement condition on a scale of 10 to 100, with 100 being the best. Based on our pavement management data, all segments of streets are rated and have a pavement conditioning index. So to see how that is useful, it helps to have an understanding of how pavement ages. This is a pavement deterioration curve. It shows pavement quality versus time. It tells us that initially, when a pavement is new and with a condition rating of 100, it ages slowly. Then as time goes on, as traffic pounds it, cracks develop, the sun oxidizes the surface and it becomes more brittle and water enters the foundation soil, its rate of deterioration increases. Each point on the curve represents a pavement con, condition number, 100 being excellent and then decreasing from there. Spending, the objective is to use up a pavement the right amount and then rehabilitate it so not too early or not too late. That is why we have the target streets for rehabilitation are in a range of a rating of sixty, of 69 to 60. Spending rehabilitation dollars before a pavement deteriorates too much is less expensive than rehabilitating it when it deteriorates too far down the curve. The next slide illustrates how a pavement rehabilitation increases pavement quality. Rehabilitation brings the pavement up to a higher val, value or rating and then the cycle of deterioration starts again. Overall, the city's streets have a pavement condition of 81. Eighty-four percent of the streets have a good or better ra, a good or better, better with a rating of 70. These streets require routine types of maintenance, including mainly crack filling, slurry seals, and patching. Eleven percent of the streets are in the 69 to 60 range. These are the streets that we need to apply rehabilitation strategies such as overlays to avoid more costly, costly rehabilitations in future years. One dollar spent now can save seven to eight dollars in future costs. Streets below those values will require more extensive rehabilitation such as reconstruction. This map, color codes of pavement condition citywide, as you can see, the greens are the best and it does show up quite well. The following photographs are some examples of street conditions. The first one is an example of a street condition that was, that was paved a few years ago and is rated over 90. This will serve for many years without requiring major maintenance. The following street has a pavement condition of 72. This street is scheduled for rehabilitation in 2012. The next street has a pavement condition of 62 and this street is scheduled for rehabilitation in 2010. This, this photograph is of Lawrence Drive and it's scheduled for reconstruction in 2010. As you can see, it has a very low condition rating. The reason it was not, not done earlier is because underground storm drains were needed to be installed and then following that, Southern California Edison installed underground conduit. New paving was delayed to allow all the underground work to proceed first. This illustrates the issue of timing that sometimes arise, that pavement condition alone cannot always dictate the years that we actually pave the streets. Overall, pavement condition in the city is 81. It's equal or better than most local agencies. It's attributed to a high level of initial construction that resulted in durable, long-lasting pavements and in being proactive and consistent with annual street maintenance and rehabilitation This slide shows the condition of city of Thousand Oaks streets, the green, the green bar as compared to other local agencies. Also, California League of Cities did a statewide needs assessment for local streets and roads recently. It found that statewide, the pavement condition index is 68 and it is projected to fall to 58 in 10 years. Sixty percent of the street network was paved since 1991 and we have placed over 500,000 tons of asphalt rubber hot mix to extend the service life of the city's streets. The asphalt rubber hot mix also has an added attribute of noise reduction and it also has an aesthetic appeal. This process has recycled- This process has recycled 1.7 million discarded tires, which is a positive environmental impact. And if we stacked those tires up, it'd be about 160 miles tall, or if we lined them end to end, it would be roughly about 700 miles and would cover the edges of most of our streets in Thousand Oaks. This graph shows our historical paving in terms of tons and miles since 1991. And this shows the historical map of the streets that have been paved since 1991 also. Finally, this is a street that was paved in 1991. It has, it is a long-lasting street. It has a PCI in the 80s, and we do expect it to have quite a, quite a long service life remaining. Also, this graph shows the condition of streets based on age, and as you notice, even the oldest street is in a range of a little more than 70, and the trend is exactly what we would expect in street deterioration. And at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Jay Spurgeon.
This is exciting stuff, isn't it? We have-
Could I, excuse me, Jay, could I ask you one quick question? Are we still able to pursue a program of trying to address each street in the city every 25 years with some sort of treatment? I know that was a goal, and it was something that was, economics played into it, but that was number one. And number two, on some of these streets, are some of these streets that were put in and on by private developers and through annexation or what have you came into the city's inventory, and because of that, that they were put into a different standard prior to being inside the city limits, does that factor into this at all?
Well, your first question, I can answer. The level of funding that we've had over the last several years has enabled us to overlay on a schedule of about 20 to 25 years. So that is the schedule that we've been on, and I'm going to, I'm going to talk in a minute about where we're going with our paving maintenance revenues, so. The second question about pavements that are brought into the city by new development, those, of course, are fairly new, and they have to meet a certain standard in terms of condition before we accept them into the city inventory and take our responsibility for maintenance. In other words, depending on how badly the contractors beat up the new streets, they may have to do a final overlay or slurry seal before we accept them. And regarding annexations, we haven't had those for some time. And I think the gist of your question is, before did streets were annexed, did we require any rehabilitation prior to accepting them? Is that the question?
Yes, yes, that's a fine way to phrase it. I'm just thinking about, and I know, I realize, we're 45 years into this enterprise now, but during part of the evolution, were there projects that were outside city limits where they were annexed to the city that came in, and they were built to a different standard than the city would have required if they'd have been built under city supervision?
I think the answer to that is yes. Some of the original tracks in the city that were constructed under county jurisdiction may not have had the same structural thickness of pavement and base material that we require today. So, in some of those neighborhoods, maybe those streets deteriorated faster than a brand-new city street that we would have, that would have been built under our supervision, our inspection.
Thank you.
Okay, continuing, the pavement management program is a computer-based program, and it allows us to run a number of budget scenarios. And this chart here shows several scenarios that we provide, just as an example of how we use this data to analyze how we're going to plan for the coming five years program in terms of overlays and other street rehabilitation. And so what we're able to do is use different funding levels that then predict over time how our overall pavement condition will fare. So, for example, the green line here is a projection of if we were able to continue with our current level of expenditure, which is about $4 million per year for pavement maintenance, our, the overall city pavement condition rating would degrade from 81 to about 79 over a five-year period. So, not too bad, actually, keeping the pavements in fair condition. If we wanted to maintain the exact level we have today, a PCI or condition index of 81 would require about over $5 million per year to spend on pavement maintenance. If we did nothing, which is always a scenario we like to run, us engineers, it would drop to 73 after five years and degrade fairly steeply after that because, again, of that degradation curve. And this map just shows our proposed five-year overlay program based on our analysis within the pavement management program. This chart here, what I wanted to do is just briefly walk you through how transportation and street maintenance revenue is generated. Where does it come from? And when you buy a gallon of gas, within that currently, say, $3 a gallon, there's 18 cents that goes to the state, that is an excise or a flat rate tax. There's another 18.4 cents that goes to the federal government, that's also a flat rate excise tax. In other words, those two don't vary with the price a gallon, and the price of a gallon of gas. In fact, they have not been changed for over 15 years. So we have this funding source, 18 for the state, 18 roughly for the feds, that hasn't increased. It hasn't kept up with inflation, and that's a significant factor as we consider going forward, trying to keep our streets in good shape. Also, when you buy a gallon of gas, you pay sales tax on that, and that money is reserved for transportation and street maintenance, and that's this upper circle there, and that's Prop 42. That's at the current level of gas prices, that's another 18 cents roughly. So, out of $3 a gallon, you pay about 55 cents in taxes. There's also, every time you buy anything in the state, the statewide sales tax, there's a quarter cent that is set aside under the Transportation Development Act for transportation and street maintenance funding as well. So what do we have in terms of our funding sources specifically for street maintenance and other street-related projects? So these funds here are shown, this is after the funding for transit, for transportation, bicycle pedestrian projects, those are all taken away, and this is kind of what we're left for maintaining our streets. And roughly, the gas tax, the two lines, first two lines there, that's the 18 cents that goes to the state, and it gets divvied up, and this is our share that comes back, so roughly about 1.2 million per year is what the city gets from that source. The TDA fund varies considerably because that is from the statewide sales tax, quarter cent on statewide, statewide sales tax. So depending on the economy, that varies considerably based on how much people are buying and therefore how much sales tax the state is collecting. Prop 42 is sales tax on gasoline, that's roughly 650 a year. And then there's another category, which we consider one-time grants, and these come from a variety of sources. Several years ago, the state electorate passed Proposition 1B, and in that funding, that bond measure, was considerable funds set aside for street maintenance. The city received 4 million from that to do overlays and other work, similar work. ERA stimulus funding, although the city's received well over 10 million for all kinds of different projects through the stimulus, the first stimulus bill that was passed last year, about 900,000 of that went to street paving. And then federal highway bills, which are passed every five or six years, there's funding that is, that we get for that, and that's roughly about 2.5 million for each of those five, six-year periods, so. Those one-time funds, we do not know, in fact, we doubt that those will be, go out into the future as compared to the typical gas tax fundings which are ongoing. Now, the TDA funds, I just want to mention the 2 to 3.5 million per year there, those funds will be eliminated, as it's noted there, in 2014, and that's per the state legislation that was passed recently. In other words, the, all of that money has to go to transportation only, transit programs and that kind of thing. Leftover excess funding, which the city has been successful in using because we've been able to meet our transit needs without using all of our TDA funds, the excess can go to street maintenance. This new law says, no, you can't do that anymore. That's a significant hit to our pavement funding sources. And this chart here just kind of shows how volatile our funding has been over time, up to '08, '09, those are actual numbers, and you can see it just spikes up and down. I mean, it swings millions of dollars per year. We anticipate this, and we do plan for this, and so our CIP, our capital program for paving, tries to make use of these funds as they become available. But as we go into the future, based on a number of issues that, including the loss of TDA and the loss of one-time funding, we'll be down to about 2 million a year in ongoing revenues. This slide here is to just provide a perspective of maybe how fortunate we are in the U.S., I don't know. This shows the, at least from last year, I guess about May 2009, the price of a gallon of gasoline for a number of countries in Europe as compared to the United States. And you can see the Europeans pay well over, on average, about $6 per gallon, and of that, 2/3 are their taxes for transportation, road maintenance, and other type similar programs. In the United States, of course, we pay much less than that, only 40 cents out of a $2.54 gallon of gas, of course, that was last year. We only pay about 16% in tax when we buy a gallon of gas. At the same time, revenues are not looking good. Construction costs have increased. This chart shows the cost of asphalt as has bid on city projects over the past, well, since 1991. For about 10 years, the costs were fairly stable, averaging about $53 per ton for asphalt. Our last project that we had bid for overlays in late 2008, the bid was $107 per ton. So over just a few years, the cost for asphalt more than doubled, more than doubled. So, a significant impact to our program from increased costs. This chart, of course, reflects the rising cost of oil. So in summary, our funding, we anticipate ongoing consistent funding at about $2 million per year, and as Tom, or as we had pointed out with our pavement management program scenarios, we really need 4 to 5 million per year to maintain the streets in the excellent condition that they are today. Anything less than that, and we start seeing, in the long run, a degradation. So additional revenues are going to be required in the tune of 2 to 3 million dollars per year if we want to maintain our streets in the condition that they are today.
Just to wrap up a little bit, kind of a quick summary, in general, our streets are in very good shape now. We've been fortunate that they've been well-maintained, they've been well, they were well-built to start with, and so we've generally been able to maintain good streets. As we've shown, the revenue sources lately have been very volatile, up and down, but the trend is that the revenues are dropping and declining. One of the things that just happened is last week, on Thursday, both houses approved transitioning the sales tax on gasoline to an excise tax. And so that sales tax piece would go away, and they'd make that an excise tax, and in general, it's supposed to be dollar-for-dollar change. But, you know, the question is, why would the state make that change? And the reason they would make that change is that there's a number of protections in place right now to keep the state from taking those sales tax funds, and if it becomes an excise tax, those protections that we currently have will go away. So the governor hasn't signed it yet, but he's expected to. That will introduce even more volatility into some of those funds that we've got now by allowing the state to borrow those monies and potentially not pay them back in the future. What this means to us is that all of the gas tax revenues we're receiving are really going to go, need to go to street maintenance. In the past, we've used some of these funds for the sidewalk program. If you remember, two years ago, we suspended that program because we saw this trend, and we knew that our revenues were getting tight. We've also used these funds for some drainage projects, some byclaim projects, and the other thing we use gas tax for is matching funds, and we'll need to continue to do that because when we get grants, there's always some matching component, and so we use these funds to leverage more money. So we'll be looking for new revenue sources. There's going to be a new revenue source of some sort that will be required at some point in time to maintain our streets. We're fortunate that they're in the condition they are now. And so with that, we recommend that City Council approve the pavement management program, direct staff to continue the maintenance in accordance with the capital program and the available funding that we have, and we are more than happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of staff? We'll start down this end, Dr. Glancy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, Mr. Watkins, this is really a very great report, really very nicely done, easy to read, and it was really somewhat riveting, but it was very interesting. Thank you. I have a question for you pertaining to the graph, on graph 6, you show the life cycle of pavement, and when the pavement is rehabilitated, why doesn't it go up to the previous level of 100%?
You know, pavement consists of the asphalt that you see on top, and then there's aggregate base below that, and then compacted subgrade below those. And so when you rehabilitate a pavement, generally what we're doing is we're adding an inch and a half, maybe two inches of fresh asphalt on the top, but we're not going down and replacing the aggregate base or anything below that. And so you're bringing that pavement up, back up to very good condition, up into the 90s, but it's not going to be all the way back to 100. It's not going to be quite as good as it was when it was first built.
Okay, then because it doesn't get up to that prior high level, it also doesn't have the same extended life expectancy. Okay, very interesting. And as related to asphalt, the cost of asphalt, I noticed the graph from '03 to last year, a couple of years ago continually climbs. Is there any reason to believe that it's not going to continue to climb?
I'm sorry, that it's going to or that it won't, or?
No, it looks like it's climbing now. Is there any reason to think that it won't continue?
You know, the price of asphalt, of course, very closely reflects the price of oil, and I don't know that I'm going to try to predict what the price of oil is going to be in the future. We did have some good news recently, there is at least another asphalt plant that's opened up in Ventura County. For the past number of years, there's only been one. And so asphalt has either been brought in from other counties, or it's come from the single asphalt plant in Oxnard now, there's a new plant in Santa Paula. So I think that at least with some competition, we're hopeful that prices will be as competitive as possible.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Mrs. Irwin?
Thank you, and I have to agree with Dr. Glancy that I think it was a very interesting report, and especially how you optimize when exactly we should be doing the paving. Obviously, a lot of thought and calculation goes into that. I had a couple of questions. The first is that in '91, you switched to the asphalt mixed with the tires, and that kind of correlates, I should say, it was 2001, right?
1991 was correct.
Oh, '91. Was it significantly more expensive to do that? I know that it has a longer life expectancy.
Yeah, back at that time, in 1991, the costs for asphalt rubber were close to double what the costs were for conventional asphalt. The trade-off was that you also had a design that allowed you to put down a thinner section. So even though the cost for the material was double, if you were going to be putting down, say, 2.5 inches of conventional asphalt, you might only need an inch and a half of asphalt rubber. And so it ended up being very competitive cost-wise, but it generally costs a little bit more. And the decision at that point was both for the engineering materials, because as it's turned out over time, those streets have lasted a lot longer, and so there's, Tom showed one picture of, I think it was Avenue de Sable, that was paved in 1991, and it's still rating very high, and so- very high. And so, you might, with conventional asphalt, be thinking it'll be ready for some sort of major rehabilitation, but at this point, it's not. So, that's been money well-spent on the asphalt rubber.
Okay, and you still can, I mean, obviously environmentally, it's absolutely the right thing to do, but you still continue to look at the cost of conventional asphalt?
We do, and one of the things that this new asphalt plant is bringing is what's called a warm mix asphalt. Asphalt is a very energy-intensive product, not only because of the fact that it contains a lot of oil, but it's mixed at very high heats, and so it requires a lot of energy to produce. And so, there's a lot of effort going into finding more environmentally conscious ways of producing the material itself, and those, of course, will have both environmental and economic benefits.
Okay, and thank you for that. And then, the other question is, and I guess it goes to another agenda item, the resolution in support of local taxpayer funding, transportation funding. If the governor does sign this gas tax switch over to the general fund, and then the Transportation Protection Act passes, does it revert back to the way that it was funded before, or are we losing that three to three and a half million?
I'm not sure how the Transportation Protection Act would affect that action that's currently being taken, or was taken by legislators waiting for the governor's signature, I'm not sure how those two will interact.
Okay, because that's a, that will really remove a significant amount of our funding, obviously, as you mentioned.
Right, the semi-good news for this city is that since our streets are in fairly good shape, a lot of the other cities and counties in the state are really carrying the ball as far as going after more funding and protecting the funding that we have, because the further down that maintenance curve you are, the more of an issue it becomes for your city. And so, some of those cities are really fighting this a whole lot harder than we are, you know, I think you saw by our side, if we didn't spend anything for the next few years, you wouldn't see a huge change, and then you start to notice.
Okay.
And so, we're in a fairly good situation for this revenue, this kind of, the revenue situation of the state to kind of hopefully work itself out over the next few years.
And maybe we can have our legislative analyst on that agenda item comment further. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Irwin. Now, Mr. Fox?
Yeah, thanks. Just, I was looking at the slide, it's like 23 and 24, page 12 of the handout, and then the budget scenarios on the staff report at page 13. And I'm just curious, these are amounts per year, is that correct, from the gas tax and the TDA funds and Prop 42 and the grants?
Yes.
Okay. I'm trying to get a handle on, staff's recommendation is, in looking at the report, to spend about $4 million a year, is that the recommendation of staff?
Yes.
Okay. On page 13, it talks about spending a little over $5 million per year. The streets can be overlaid at a, actually a more aggressive rate, but it doesn't talk about the percentile that it would be at. I get the $8 million would be for 85%, with the $5 million continuous at the 81%?
Right, and we put a range in there, the $5 million that's generated by this program is based on an average pavement degradation curve, and what we've been seeing is our payments are decaying a little more slowly. And so, that's why we put in kind of our summary, we need between $4 and $5 million for the immediate future, $4 million. And what happens is, we do this every five years, and you try to analyze what streets are actually coming up for maintenance. So, 20 years ago, for example, if I overlay the street, we'd predict, we would be predicting that it's needing maintenance this year. But you don't just, we don't just go out and overlay, you go out and you survey the street, you determine what's needed, and if you can get under five years out of it, then you do. That's why it's kind of a dynamic.
Yeah, I don't think anyone, I was impressed, I don't remember this detailed report in past councils' years with respect to how we determine the condition of the streets. If you guys did that, I certainly don't remember, but it was very, very interesting, all kidding aside on how scientific of approach you have. That being said, I'm interested in maintaining our current levels, and I don't even know what the difference between 79 and 81 is, it's a number. But, it's, it's less of a maintenance than we had before, and I was just adding up your slides, and it appears that we have a $5.4 million per year without the grants, and then another $7.4 with the grants, I recognize those are one-time funds. So, I'm just curious, if it's going to take about $5 million to maintain our current level, why would we not do that? And just tell us, we're going to maintain at the current level?
Yeah, the difference between 81 and 79 you're mentioning, you wouldn't notice it, and that's after only five years that they would degrade to that point.
Right.
It's after that that you really would start needing more, or you'd be reanalyzing and saying, what do you need from there? But you're right, we're targeting the max, you know, the amount to keep them at the condition that they are now. And what we're saying is, this program spits out, it says $5.4 million is what you need, it's using pavement and pavement degradations from a whole bunch of different cities. Maybe we're being optimistic, we're thinking we can probably hold that level at about $4 million, but it's going to be with, between $4 and $5 million.
Okay, then my question is, and again, I recognize this is a number, why wouldn't we, rather than telling the council, we're going to drop from 81 to 79, why wouldn't we tell council, we're going to, we're going to do what we need to do to keep it at 81?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, the piece on that is that we took the actual money we have now, so the $4 million is what we have in the budget, that's what's going to do it.
Is there more money coming out of gas tax and Prop 42?
No, not at this point.
Okay, so those dollars amount per year?
Let me let Jay add on there, make sure I got it straight.
We're, you know, we're six months, or, you know, six, seven months into our two-year budget cycle, and for the next two years, we can maintain that for $4 million per year, and that's because of some fund balance, and even though we expect much less than $2 to $3.5 million from TDA, in fact, we're only expecting $750,000 this fiscal year from TDA. And that's because of lower revenues, plus our transit contract went up considerably recently.
Right.
So, those two factors, so we really, this has sort of been more of an average, long-term, these are the levels of funding we've received.
All right, so, okay, that does make a difference, because it's a little misleading. Okay. Give me one second here. I didn't want to note for the viewing public that on the graph that you've provided to the council, in view of the conditions of city streets, 85% of totals, of the total citywide pavement program is at the good, the very good, or excellent level. So, we are really doing a good job, and comparing to other cities, there's really no comparison, I would say, with the street overlays that we provide here in the city. I hear from residents all the time that come through and repaving, resurfacing the streets, still the streets again, so I think we're doing a good job on that. And again, very, very scientific, very good way of, for you guys to provide an equitable, and from a scientific standpoint, making sure we're staying up with the whole city, so good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Beldner, opinion?
Thank you. I do want to mention first that this was indeed an excellent presentation, as well as explanation and clarification. This was probably the most detailed report that we have had, that I can remember, in terms of how you determine what needs to be done in order to keep our streets in top shape. I wanted to know whether, in making your assessment for the future, whether you are taking into consideration also inclement weather, such as we have had lately, and of course, causing some damage to streets?
We really look at average weather and how that average weather impacts streets over their lifetime. So, a brand-new street isn't that impacted by the type of weather we've had. Streets are primarily degrading through ultraviolet degradation, they cause them to be brittle. Once they start to crack, then the water will start to get in there, and the water will allow the street to flex more, and then you'll see more cracks. And so, that's why we've got that very aggressive slurry seal program also, because it does two things. One, you can consider it sunscreen almost, it protects the street from the ultraviolet degradation, but also seals up all those cracks and keeps the water out. And so, by doing that, it really is somewhat impervious to all this weather we have, but clearly areas that get a lot more rain, or if we had a whole lot more rain, it does strip out some of the oils that are in the street, and it helps, it would help them to degrade more quickly.
All right, so there are some streets in Thousand Oaks that obviously will be more susceptible to damage, and having to repair those, that is included in this overall assessment?
Yes.
It is, okay, so you're testifying that, okay. Also, the impact of the Verizon Fios program that has torn up several streets, and of course, Verizon had agreed to cover or repair some of the, some of the damage, but I don't know whether the program is completely, is already completed, I should say, but how does that factor into the overall slurring?
About 60%, is that right? They're about 60% complete as all at this point with their installation, they kind of slowed back a bit, and then they've been back at it again. The agreement with Verizon, we can't require them to either overlay or slurry seal all the streets, but the agreement that we had with them was that any of the streets that they had to actually trench the streets, so if they hit rock or other underground factors that didn't allow them to bore, where they're kind of doing using a tunneling method, then in that case, they've been slurry sealing the streets, or they would give us the money, and we included that in our slurry seal. So, they paid for it, but we slurried all those streets on their behalf. The other streets, they do, they do their trenching, so they've got trenching pits, and those get repaired, and then primarily, it's an aesthetic issue in those neighborhoods, because you've got new asphalt patches on top of an old asphalt, and they don't match, and usually after a few years, they kind of blend in a little bit. But we haven't included any additional funds to go back and address those streets specifically, because they're doing the whole city.
My preference would be to maintain the status quo, obviously. Now, with your recommendation tonight, can you reiterate as to how long that sort of maintenance would continue at the level that you were proposing tonight, before we go back to perhaps what it is now?
At this point, what we're really telling the city councils is that the streets are in very good shape, and for the next couple of years, there's funding that we will be spending to keep those streets in very good shape. Our real concern is for the, is for the future years, where our projections at this point, so the revenue is going from what we've been spending in the $4 to $5 million range, down to around $2 million. And so, what we're going to be working really hard on in the next couple of years is identifying a funding source that we can count on for maintaining our streets.
Okay, so tonight's proposal is just as a result of the ongoing budget situations and so forth. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mitnick, you had a comment on this?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we appreciate your indulgence tonight on this issue. We asked Mark to do this because this is a significant infrastructure asset, as he mentioned at the beginning of the report here, it's $700 million worth of infrastructure, probably more than that, but that's their best guess. As we wrap up here, I did want to call your attention to attachment three, which shows you visually the pavement conditions, and you can see where the streets that are colored blue and green, they're in good to excellent condition, and those that are, I think it's pink or orange and red, they're on the opposite end, they're in the older neighborhoods and so on, and those streets need to be repaired and upgraded. When we look at this map, five or 10 years from now, you'll see a lot more red and orange, and a lot less blue and green. And that's why we're here tonight, and to make you aware of this. The main culprit of this change that this community will see is not the city, not due to bad management, lack of vision or foresight, but the state of California taking local funds away. Unless we can find another revenue source to backfill, our streets will indeed degrade over the next decade. We are on the verge of seeing a decrease in service level here, so let the record state that we're aware of it, it will happen, and we need to come up with a plan. And it also illustrates why we, as a municipality, need to be more financially independent. So, I just wanted to point that out, because the colors will change. A good report, Mark.
Thank you. One quick question, then a comment. On your slide 25, the European comparisons, those European prices, were those adjusted to get to gallons, or are those, because I know that it's, fuel is sold in liters, and sometimes, but I, how did they do that? These aren't really gallons? If that's the way it was sold, that's what it would cost?
Yes, they made it so that, they converted it so there's an apples-and-apples comparison.
Okay, okay. I particularly appreciate this report, the report's excellent. And regularly, the Public Works Director or the Deputy Director, or one of the senior engineers accompanies me at the County Transportation Commission. This is only a tiny piece of a huge mosaic, and you can't imagine the creativity of the state of California when it's looking at funding. As just a quick example, one suggestion that surfaced not too long ago, the California Highway Patrol has a charge to the California General Fund, that somebody came up with the idea that if they moved the California Highway Patrol responsibility for funding into Caltrans and made it, funded it out of one of the tax agencies, they'd relieve the pressure on the state general fund, and they could take more of that tax money away from local people and fund the highway patrol, because actually, the highway patrol is supposed to be patrolling state highways and roads, therefore goes the nexus of the relationship. There are things like this, we talk about our public transportation system, in this city, our public transportation system is a work in progress. But if you think about it, the city of Thousand Oaks has a public transit system, the city of Simi Valley has one, the city of Moor Park has one, we have Vista, we have routes coming up from the Department of Transportation in Los Angeles, from the Los Angeles Metropolitan District. Every one of those separate independent systems has to have management, oversight, budgets, operation, maintenance, maintenance facilities. And when we try and talk about a regional transit authority for southeastern Ventura County, which would be one agency, smaller vehicles, greater frequency, we can't, we can't seem to get off the ground, because everyone is so focused, and rightfully so, on what's going on in Sacramento and the manipulation of the funding mechanisms, and I don't know what the answer's going to be, but it certainly isn't going to get any better. As the state, as you heard today, right now, it's $20 billion for next year, and we know that it'll rise. And we've got a lot of very creative people sitting in the California State Legislature trying to figure out how to get more of that money to not only maintain their programs, but expand to new programs, while they take a look at, it reminds me of that old saying, when Willie Sutton was asked why he robbed banks, said, because that's where the money was. Well, that's why the state of California keeps looking at cities, special districts and counties. And we need to continue to get that message out. Reports like this would be excellent for taking out to service clubs and different organizations within the community to share this information so that the community really realizes what's going on, because there's an expectation in this community that when I come back in, I'm going to be able to drive down every single street in this city, and I'm never going to have to worry about hitting a pothole and knocking the front-end alignment out of my car, and then the rest of the quality of life issues that we struggle so hard to maintain. And the public is not aware of what's going on right under the surface, literally under the surface, with the potential deterioration of our roadways. So, that being said, excellent report, very well done. What's the pleasure of the council? Mr. Fox?
I will move the recommendation to approve the pavement management program report, direct staff to continue maintenance of the city streets in accordance with the pavement management program and the available budget.
Thank you. Comments to the motion? Being done, please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you very much. We'll go to 9B, the Norwegian grade.
Thank you, Mayor Gillette, it's the same team of engineers working on this project, so we'll all just stay up here real quick. And this is a project that oftentimes, advertising for bids is just on the consent calendar, but this project was unique enough that we thought it was worthy of a department report. Just very quickly, the Norwegian grade is northern Moor Park Road, running from Kai Contento down to Santa Rosa Road, historic route that existed before the state Route 23 and was the primary connection through, into the city of Moor Park. It's kind of unique for this city, it's kind of a winding two-lane road, starp embankments on either side, and we came to City Council last April to talk about some of the options for construction, because when we did the geotechnical analysis, we determined there was a couple of sections that were going to have to be entirely excavated and recompacted because there- that were going to have to be entirely excavated and recompacted because they're settling and kind of going into the adjacent canyon. Because of that, it's going to require closure of the roadway for a couple month period. The road will be rehabilitated by in-place recycling of pavements and so this is both an economic and environmentally beneficial method of doing the roadway, so the existing roadway will basically be chewed up, additional oils will be put back into it, it'll be recompacted in place and then a new overlay will go on top. And then like I say, within one area, there'll be a slope stabilization, so it'll be dug up several feet deep. And then there's some minor stormwater, storm drain improvements, and then the other major improvement that the grade will see is a guardrail for the length of the grade. We've got highway safety improvement grants that are paying for the guardrail, those require matching funds from the city. And then because of the impact of this project, we just recently, week before last, had a stakeholders meeting and we had representatives there from Cal Lutheran, from the city, from the city of Moore Park, from Canal Wreckin' Park, the Norseman Lodge, Thousand Oaks Police, Fire and the YMCA. And the reason for that is a lot of interest because the CRPD owns property, of course, the McCray Ranch at the bottom of the grade, the YMCA at the top of the grade, Cal Lutheran very nearby on Olson Road, and then police and fire because with prolonged road closure, we want to make sure that we meet all their needs. And we also have some residents that live at the bottom of the grade and we're coordinating with them. Not on this list, but we have been in contact and will be in contact with includes the county of Ventura and Santa Rosa Municipal Advisory Council, so we'll be coordinating with them too, as we have in the past when we've done intermittent road closures, both for the surveying and the geotechnical exploration, as well as when we do road maintenance out there at times, we go ahead and close the road just because it is a much, much safer environment for both the people working out there and for the traveling public. A couple of enhancements that, one that was already built into the project is a left turn lane at the YMCA driveway, some others that came out of the stakeholders meeting and that was, we're looking at, trying to see what we can do for sight distance at the YMCA driveway. There is a large mountain in the way, so we're not going to be able to move the whole thing, but there's some enhancements that can be made to increase their sight distance. And then there's also interest in a historical monument out there, and that's why the gentleman from the Norseman Lodge and Sons of Norway were at the meeting, there's interest in doing a monument to the construction of the Norwegian grade, how it was originally built and how it got that name because even though that's what we all refer to it as, all our street signs out there saying Moore Park Road. And then there'll also be some additional signage as you're coming southbound or up the grade, warning about the YMCA driveway. So the temporary road closure is, as I said, it's going to be required for this project. We're trying to, one of the reasons we came to council tonight is to make sure that we are advertising the project early enough that we can get it awarded because our goal is to construct it during the summertime. All of our traffic volumes throughout the city are lower during the summertime, you don't have the school issues for anybody who might be commuting that grade for school time, and so that is our goal at this point is to do a summer closure. We are working with a whole bunch of different agencies on that closure and the coordination, and we'll also be doing outreach through the city's website, we'll be doing press releases in the local paper, we'll have message boards onsite ahead of time before any of the closure takes place. So probably the really important or interesting part about this project at this point is the funding piece. We do, we're hoping for $2 million in the federal jobs bill, this is kind of the stimulus two. Again, similar to some of the revenues we talked about before, it's a little bit of a following the bouncing ball, trying to figure out how much we think we might have coming out of this next stimulus act. Initially, we thought it was going to be around $2 million and it was all dedicated to this project. The number then has gone up and then the number has since gone down. And so part of council's action tonight, we'll make this project one of those shovel-ready projects that's ready to go. So we have got the design done, the environmental is done, we are ready to go to bid. Depending upon what happens with the jobs bill, we may be back to council or we may have to come up with alternative funding sources. That alternative would be the gas tax funds that we just talked about previously. So we'll be taking gas tax funds that at this point, we're only hoping to spend $91,000, that could end up being the $2 million chunk. If the jobs bill then comes through later, that would make up for the gas tax. But similar to what we've done with some other projects, when we come back to the city council for the award, at that point, we would then identify very clearly for the city council what the funding sources are for this project. And so with that, we're asking for the authorization to advertise for bids and we would come back to the city council once those bids were open and we've gotten the funding piece determined and ask for award recommendation at that point. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins. Questions of staff, Miss Speldele Pinia?
Thank you. I was wondering about closing the street. Obviously, we have quite a few hundred, if not thousands, of people using that roadway in order to get to the Santa Rosa Valley. Do we have a count as to how many people are using it and how are they going to get in and out?
Jay? You know, I don't think we, I don't think we do recall, was it? Six thousand ADT, so six thousand cars a day in both directions. So that would be going both northbound and southbound on a 24-hour basis.
And you're confident that with the measures you're proposing tonight, that they won't have any problems other than delays getting in and out of that Moore Park, Santa Rosa Valley or the adjacent areas?
I'm quite sure for some, it's not going to be as convenient as taking the greatest, but the 23 freeway is the alternate route and you can get the 23 freeway, take that around Tierra Raja back down. So it does provide a suitable detour. And I said, we've closed the road a number of times for maintenance and for other needs and we've done all the signing, whatever else, and we've received very few complaints. It's worked very well.
Thank you.
The significance of this one, just for a longer period of time.
It might, it might be interesting now too, that the issue of cyclists, which heavily used on weekends, that has been resolved now with an agreement with the homeowners association now at the end of Reed Road, so that cyclists can work around, go up through Reed Road through the old treatment plan on Olson Road and they're back on, they're back on Olson Road, so.
Correct.
It's actually a lot safer and a lot better roadway too, so. Dr. Glancy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Watkins, in the stakeholders meetings, was the Santa Rosa Valley MAC contacted?
No, that was actually my mistake, neither the county of Ventura nor the Santa Rosa MAC was invited to the stakeholders meeting.
Okay. I will say, I had the-
Yeah, we've talked to them since then and we will, at this point, I mean, they will be, you know, on our email distribution list, we'll be keeping them up to date.
Yeah, I don't see how there's any possible way of doing this project without closing the road and thank goodness, there is a parallel road, a little bit out of the way, but it does exist. But I think it's very important that the MAC be contacted. I happened to see the chair of the MAC the other night at an event and she was extremely thrilled and pleased that the city was doing the Norwegian grade because it had been a long time necessity and she was very complimentary that we were actually doing it. You're expecting to start in June of 2010, is this realistic or is this kind of a, let's hope?
It's maybe a little optimistic. If the jobs bill comes through, it's just all a matter of when that gets approved and the funding is in there like we, like it has been, then it's, then it's very realistic. And it could be depending on when we open bids and the contractor's ready to go, it could end up being July. If that jobs bill doesn't go and we have to identify other funding, we may be back before council with another date. Or it could turn out that, like with the first stimulus funding, the funding itself partially delays you, so it could be that they come through, yes, we have the money, but we've got to jump through some other hoops and that might end up delaying it because the money itself comes with some strings attached.
Okay, is there a point at which we put it off from a start to a later date that's more favorable? For example, you identify summer as being the ideal time to close the road. Whenever the money comes through, we're ready to go, will we start?
Unless it's in the middle of the winter time, then we would, we would still want to start. So if we miss a summer window and we got pushed into fall, I think we would still want to go forward. That scenario means that there's still federal money there, which is a huge advantage for us. If we got into the winter time, we might want to delay a little bit further.
Thank you.
For information, the stakeholders meeting was a result of my being contacted by representatives of the Sons of Norway and the YMCA. When they became aware that the city was working on this project, saw it as an opportunity to get their, get their oil in the water, so to speak. And it just happened to coincide with some relatively fresh research on the Norwegian grade, its history and what have you that was done by the Historical Society. And just after the turn of the century, 19th century, and the Norwegian immigrants that were settling in Thousand Oaks and when the railroad had come through and it changed their marketing area to Moore Park, and one of the, one of the family's sons was seriously injured in an accident, his wagon tipped over. And as a result of that, the residents borrowed, got a loan from the county of Ventura, that's probably the last time they got a loan from the county of Ventura, but it was for $60 that they used to buy dynamite to work out the roadbed up there, the grade, so a little extra trivia that goes with it. But it was an interesting meeting and a lot of people participated, including CRPD, who's looking at helping with the monuments, perhaps both at the top and the bottom, to denote what the history of that particular place is and the history of that part of our city, so. Anyhow, any further questions of staff? Pleasure of the council? Dr. Glancy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's a pleasure to move staff recommendation and we'll just cross our fingers, this guy will move along on schedule.
Thank you. I have a motion. Comments to the motion? There being none, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Item Nine C, Ms. Laba and Mr. Mullenex, well.
Good evening, council members. The item you have before you for your consideration is a resolution to support the Local Taxpayer, Public Safety and Transportation Protection Act of 2010. As you may recall, last year, the state legislature shifted $5 billion in local funds to balance its budget. Of the $5 billion, they borrowed approximately $2 billion in property taxes from local governments, took $2 billion in local redevelopment funds despite superior court rulings saying that these shifts were unconstitutional. They shifted $910 million in transit funding away from local agencies. Again, the courts ruled that these raids were unconstitutional. They voted to take $1 billion of local government's share of the highway user tax, also known as HUDA, to repay the state bond debt. And for us, luckily, this measure stalled in the assembly. They also took action to eliminate sales tax on gas, excuse me, Proposition 42 funds and HUDA and replace it with a gasoline fee that, again, was unconstitutional. Luckily, the governor voted to veto this measure. They also threatened to borrow Prop 42 transportation funds to address the state's deficit. How this affected the city? It directly affected us by 9.9 million, resulting from HUDA and Proposition 42 raids, redevelopment agency seizures and Proposition 1A loans. The resolution you have before you is what the League of California Cities is proposing as an ironclad measure to protect us from any state shifts of local funding to balance their budget. To tell you more about this act is Dave Mullenex. Dave is our Regional Public Affairs Manager and he has information about this resolution as well as the act.
Pleasure to be here, Mr. Mayor, our honourable council members.
Good evening, Mr. Mullenex, and welcome.
Nice to see you. Always a pleasure. And you know, as bad as all that sounds, what Ms. Laba just said as far as the takeaways for fixing the budget, which we're facing a $20 billion deficit, this is just another year in the, in the continuous cycle that's been going on for almost 20 years now, that whenever California's budget, whenever the legislature gets their budget in a mess, they reach down and raid local monies. It started in the early 90s with ERAF shifts taking property taxes and it's only accelerated over the last several years. We literally had four different budget drills last year where they would cobble together a budget that was, you know, put together with a lot of accounting gimmickry and smoke and mirrors and duct tape and they'd congratulate each other, do some photo ops, pat each other on the backs and the budget would fall apart in relatively short amount of time. And here we are now, once again, we have a $20 billion deficit. We have the 50th rated bond and credit rating in the country. I mean, Mississippi has a better credit rating than California right now. We have infrastructure projects that can't be floated because our bond rating is so low that we can't pay the interest rates. We have infrastructure around the state that's crumbling and again, the one thing that the legislature has been really addressing very effectively is fundraising for their reelection campaigns up there in Sacramento and passing resolutions, which they spent all week last week doing, one being encouraging Californians not to use profanity. And that's what's going on up in Sacramento right now. They have an institutional mindset that they look at local revenues as their, as their pot of reserve funds. And so what we have before us, we've worked for 20 years through the legislative process, try to be good players in all this, try to come up with some solutions to make sure that the local revenues that are supposed to stay here local, locally, to meet your community needs. And for 20 years, they've pretty much lied, cheated and stolen from us. So we have before us this year, a mechanism to end the silliness and the foolishness once and for all. The initiative that we're trying to qualify for the November ballot would put a complete and total firewall between Sacramento and local revenues with no emergency clauses, no loopholes that they can exploit like they've done to Prop 1A that we passed with 80% of the vote in 2004. And it would, once again, just allow us in local communities, local governments, to be able to look down the road with your budgets and be able to make long-term planning without constantly looking over our backs because Sacramento's constantly got their hands in our pockets. So what the initiative, what we're doing right now is we have to get a million signatures by end of April and we're out there on the streets with paid signature gatherers and with grassroots efforts. Because again, when it's leaders such as yourselves out there talking about an initiative, telling your community why we need it, why it's important, it adds incredible credibility to the measure. We are going to qualify the measure by late April, we'll get a proposition number by May, we'll be doing campaign activities from May through November. The polling is in the 70% level, around 75% as far as support. The legislature right now enjoys about a 12% approval rating for Californians across the state. They also have said that over, it is 75% of the recent statewide poll says they do not want Sacramento to balance their budget on local governments' backs. So the message is clear, Californians have voted over the last several years supporting local governments, they trust local governments because you guys are accessible and you are accountable, they do not trust faraway, unaccountable, inaccessible governments, and the polling has shown it, votes over the last several years have shown it, our polling for this measure shows it. If we get this thing qualified and execute the way we know we can execute, we'll eventually, we will finally have the means in which, again, to protect the revenues that are supposed to stay locally. So I've been going around to all the cities in the tri-county area and business and labor groups and civic groups, again, encouraging them to support this as well. It's pretty much a no-brainer for most people when you say, hey, this measure would keep Sacramento from raiding local revenues, people are saying, where can I sign? So you'll be, Thousand Oaks I hope will be the latest city to join the ever-growing coalition and I look forward to working with all of you in the coming months and I'll be happy to answer any questions about the campaign.
Thank you, Dave. Any questions? Yes, Ms. Speldele Pinia?
Thank you. Good evening, Ms. Laba and Mr. Mullenex. I have a question, this, this sounds like you said a no-brainer, you know, have to jump on the bandwagon. My question however is, should it pass, should it be approved by the voters? What are the chances of it being challenged by the state actually?
Well, you know, it's actually kind of commonplace, any initiative is going to, you know, be vetted by, especially by the forces of status quo that don't want to see anything changed. But what I will tell you is we spent months and months with some of the best legal minds in the state to make sure that we crafted the language to be, to pass muster of any of those type of challenges. And we used, we accessed local city attorneys, we accessed the best constitutional attorneys in the state to make sure, and we've done, this is going to be our fifth initiative over the last seven years, we know how to do this and we made sure we got this one right. So we took each- So, we went to excruciating lengths and efforts to make sure it was all right.
Funny, there are some critics who say that it is the ballot box sort of initiative that's been going on in California that's gotten California into the bind in which it is. So, it's ironic that this might perhaps change things or be actually helpful. Is there any money involved, costs involved for the cities with whom you are in contact and who you are requesting campaign or be supportive of this measure?
And I'm really glad you asked that question. When we do these type of political campaigns, we do not use any type of public resources or monies of any kind, whether it's copies off of fax machine, telephone calls. There will be no use of public funds or resources whatsoever. We do everything, whether it's in the mornings, on the weekends, after hours, when we're talking about city officials or city staff that are working on it. They never work during the workday on this type of, these efforts, and we do not use any type of city resources.
So, this is an all-volunteer grassroots effort?
That's correct.
Then, my third question and last question is, should this pass? And as I mentioned, what steps could the state potentially take in order to make up for a lot of funding? Is it then going to be tax hikes? Or what is the scenario? What could it be?
Well, I think it'll force them to, once and for all, have to address and prioritize the challenges the state faces, similar to what you all do on your council. You set your priorities within the resources you have and the challenges that you have and what your community wants, and you set those priorities accordingly. And quite frankly, over the last 20 years, the Sacramento legislature has been either incapable or having desired to do so, and this will, for once and for all, force them to do so.
Okay, I'm just wondering simply because several cities, in order to make up for some of the funds and lack in funding, have resorted to raising taxes, and I'm wondering whether this initiative might trigger the state to do the same. Anyhow.
Well, you know what? And I'm glad you mentioned that. One of the things I talked about as far as Californians, where their trust level is government, you know, last year during the budget process, we had a special election that called for some tax increases, and Californians voted it down two to one. And a lot of people said, well, Dave, we're just, you know, it's an anti-government thing, but over the past year, even in conservative counties and districts, communities have chosen to raise local taxes because there's an accountability factor there, and there's an accessibility factor, and there's a trust factor. People trust local government. They don't trust, again, faraway, unaccountable government where you send the money up there and it gets thrown down a rat hole, never to be seen again.
Thank you so much for your outspokenness. I appreciate it.
Yes. Yes, Mrs. Irwin.
Okay, thank you. I don't know if you were, I don't think, Mr. Mullinex, that you were in here earlier. We were talking about our pavement rehabilitation and the effect that the gas tax, I guess, switching from a sales tax to an excise tax is going to have on our revenues to do the pavement rehabilitation. Is that, what would happen if the governor signs that now and then this passes in September?
You know, our biggest fear as far as the changing it from a gas tax to an excise tax are those monies will be much more vulnerable to future raids by the legislature. Now, what we did do in the initiative to prevent any chicanery by the legislature over this budget cycle is that from the time we got title and summary back was this past December through November, if they do try to pull some chicanery, it all goes back. We do have a retroactive provision that says, no, 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 you can't do that. It goes back to where it was in December.
Thank you for that, Mr. Mullinex, and thanks for coming and addressing us.
Yes, Dr. Glancy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mullinex, welcome to Thousand Oaks. Is it not true that last year, when the R D A sued the state for illegally grabbing R D A funds, that the R D A won the case? But isn't it true also that the state did not have to repay the money?
That is correct, and what they did do is, they went back and changed the language a little bit and approached a little bit cosmetically, basically, and tried the same thing because, once again, they were faced with budget issues that, quite simply, they were incapable of addressing. Because, again, there are forces, special interest forces up there that, unfortunately, none of our legislatures want to stand up against. And so, once again, although they knew it was illegal, they went ahead and did it again, which is why we are in court right now, and hopefully, the Supreme Court will, once again, rule in our favor, which we feel very confident of, and they'll have to pay that money. They'll have to pay the $350 million back from last year and the $350 million that's programmed into this budget. And most people should know that redevelopment funds are one of the few mechanisms that local government have of having like a local stimulus plan that creates jobs, revitalizes downtown areas, and it's a very important part of any type of local government.
Thanks for the explanation. Are you ready for a motion?
I guess we are.
Well, thank you. You know, considering the conversation with the R D A, considering the conversation that has preceded over the last year, couple of years, about how Sacramento treats the local communities and their budgets, there's very little chance that Sacramento is going to correct itself. They don't have the will, they don't have the ability, and it's counterproductive to their main interests. While ballot box legislation has been considered to be one of the problems at this point, there's no other alternative, I don't think. There was a move to try a constitutional convention that might have done it, but that just never got traction. So, this is absolutely the best way to go about correcting the issues. If we don't initiate, if we don't get this, the League of California Cities' measure rolling and approved, Sacramento will continue to raid local communities' budgets. We will soon, or perhaps not so soon, get to the point where we can no longer balance our budgets. We'll run out of funding, and we'll really be in a world of hurt. So, we've got to act now. There is absolutely no chance Sacramento is going to do this on their own. Absolutely none. So, this may be somewhat outspoken in description, but I don't think there's any other description as to what our alternatives are. I applaud the League for its efforts in getting this thing rolling. They really put a full court press out, and they really do a good job, so please, thank the League for us. With that, I move staff's recommendation to support Local Taxpayer Public Safety and Transportation Protection Act of 2010.
Thank you. We have a motion. Comments to the motion? There being none, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mullinex, for coming down. It's nice to see you this evening.
Thank you. It's always a pleasure, and look forward to working with all of you this year.
Item 10, redevelopment agency reports. We have none. Item 11, committee commission board reports. A disabled access appeals and advisory board appointments. Mr. Dr. Glancy or Mrs. Irwin, one of you?
Mr. Mayor, I believe Mrs. Irwin is going to take care of this.
Mrs. Irwin.
Dr. Glancy and I conducted interviews for the Disabled Access Advisory Committee. What number is that? 11? Can I see the names? Okay. And we are recommending the reappointments of the two incumbents, Gloria Kelman and Gerard Nering, and the appointment of a new member, Tony Falcone, to the advisory board.
Thank you. That'll be the motion.
Yes.
Comments to the motion? There being none, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Item 12, Council Issues and Recommendations. We have none. Item 13, City Manager, follow-up to requests from the public and announcements on upcoming issues. Mr. Mitnick.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we covered the follow-up from requests from the public already and looking toward the future. Starting tomorrow, the mayor and some of the council members will be attending the National League of Cities Annual Congressional Conference and participating in lobbying for the community with the number-one focus priority project being the 101-23 interchange project. We do have that project in design phase right now. Previous lobbying efforts have secured a $6.5 million grant for that design. Now, the council will be trying to find money to build the project. So, we wish you well and hope that's a good trip. The next city council meeting will actually be a study session on March 23rd. This is your annual review of goals and objectives with a focus being on the top 10 priorities for next fiscal year. And then, the next regular council, or not next regular meeting, but the next council meeting will be, after that, will be on April 13th. A couple items worth noting at this point. There will be a study session on transportation issues. You heard about the infrastructure, and then we'll come back and share with you some transit issues and so on. We'll have Darren Kettle, the executive director of the Ventura County Transportation Commission, here to provide an overview. We will also have a public hearing on the 2006-2014 housing element. The State Housing and Community Development Department has given us the two thumbs up, green light on that housing element. Now, it will come back before council for your review and hopefully approval. By the way, the study session is at the Los Robles Golf Course, the study session for March 23rd. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mitnick. Item 14, closed session. Ms. Albano, City Attorney, would you please announce that?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of council, members of the public and staff. Council will be going into closed session, conference with labor negotiators, city representative, representative, city manager, assistant city manager and human resource director. Employee organizations include S M A, T O M A, T O C I A, unrepresented groups which are executive and temporary hourly employees pursuant to Government Code Section 54-957.6. And there will be no information that needs to be reported out from that closed session.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Albano. Item B has been pulled, announced at the beginning of the meeting. Item 15, this is our adjournment. We will adjourn to the regular meeting study session, March 23rd, 23rd, 2010, 6:00 p.m. in the evening at Los Robles Greens Golf Course, Community Banquet Center, 299 South Moore Park Road, here in the city of Thousand Oaks. The agenda, postdate, time, March 5th, 2010, 8:00 a.m. There being no further business to come before us at this time, we are adjourned. Thank you.